Hey, good evening and thank you all. And we want to welcome you all to our special called meeting. We first, because we have a few third readings, we have to have public readings as required by law as it relates to those third readings. It is by understanding that our comments are limited to three minutes each. We ask that you respect that time limit. We would also ask that in your comments that you be as respectful as humanly possible. At this time, we will go ahead and begin our public hearing. Yes, we're going to go ahead and begin our public hearing. Anyone who would like to come forward, please come forward.
What is a public hearing about? What is the matter with that?
The public hearing, excuse me, thank you. The public hearing is for two different things. Our third readings on ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes in Williamsburg County known as the Budget Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 2023 and Ending June 30, 2024, to provide for the appropriation thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a good and sufficient deed conveying the building and improvements located in the town of Hemingway, bearing TMS number 45-466-042, located at Baxley Road, Hemingway, South Carolina, also known as the Safe Auto Building, to Baxley Road LLC in consideration of the sum of $450,000. Those are the two things that we're having third readings on.
The ordinance for the taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there going to be a millage increase on our taxes?
There is a proposed millage increase, yes, ma'am.
What can we do to stop that?
That is left up to county council as it relates to their budget, as it relates to them being able to vote it up or vote it down. The county supervisor or the county supervisor's job is to propose a balanced budget to county council. The county council has the responsibility to either vote for the budget or not vote for the budget. But I have the, the county supervisor has the responsibility to present a balanced budget.
Well, I'm opposed to any tax increase. And the reason I'm opposed is because y'all don't seem to know where the money is. You know, is the audit finished? Have you got all that together? It just, it just seems too willy-nilly. I'm opposed to y'all getting any more money when you don't know where the money went. Is the audit complete?
As I stated earlier, you have three minutes. And I don't know if you want to have a, you could use your three minutes.
Yes, no, is the audit complete?
Let me answer that question. Let me make a comment, then I'll answer your question. I don't want you to waste your three minutes in a dialogue back and forth with me because when the three minutes is up, we have to go on to other people. The audit is 90 to 95% complete.
But it's not complete.
The audit was supposed to be completed last year.
I understand that.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're clear on that. We didn't get, we didn't get started on the audit until around February 1st of March. And so it is, again, it's 90 to 95% complete because we have run into quite a few issues as it relates to the audit.
I understand that. And my position is you don't know what our, what our position is, the audit's not finished. You don't know where we are. I don't think that a tax increase is valid at this point in time.
Well, I respectfully disagree with your position that I, that I don't know where we are financially. I do know where we are financially because I'm out there dealing with the finances every day. And Williamsburg County has had a very challenging time financially for a number of years. And so it, to continue to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result is the definition of insanity.
Yes, it is.
And we have to do something to get ourselves out of the hole that we're in. I respectfully, I respect your position personally. I feel this, I don't like tax increases any more than anybody else does. But I also understand that there, there comes a time when you have to make tough decisions. And again, we have presented a budget to council. The decision will be up to council as to whether or not they vote for it or they vote against it, and we will go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Is there someone else? And for the record, that was Ms. Frances McCleary. I'm sorry, yeah, come on up, sir. Yes, sir, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
My main concern about raising taxes is, just like Francis was talking about, we don't know, maybe it's been stated and I missed it, but during COVID, we had a lot of mistakes made in spending, at least the way, that's the way I understand it. We had a lot of salary increases that were substantial, a lot of programs that were started and that created a lot of spending that we, a lot of it we probably don't know about, didn't know about at the time, it just happened. My question is, what efforts are you making to cut spending? Are the salaries back down to a normal level from where they were inflated to during COVID? Those types of things. The income for Williamsburg County is substantial, but the spending is more substantial. And until we do something on the spending, we're going to be back here every year trying to increase taxes. I would ask politely for a written proposal, cutting spending in areas that can be cut. I realize there are places that it's necessary. Debt, I agree, we have to, we incurred a lot of debt, a pile of debt, a lot of it unnecessarily. But we need to address the debt first and cut the excess, just like we do at home. You know, energy costs are through the roof, food costs are through the roof. We have to cut it, cut our budget in other places. I recommend the county do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry. For the record, what was your name?
Kirk Stuckey.
Kurt Stuckey. All right, very good. Were you related to Tommy?
Unfortunately.
That's my buddy. Okay. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Stuckey.
My name is Tracy Pressley from CMD's Pantry, and I just have a couple of questions. Will new appropriation funding be allowed for the counties, number one? Number two, going forward, how does the county plan to support grassroots organizations? And I'm talking about the real grassroots organizations that have put their own money in to start, that have put a substantial amount of money in to start and is looking for sustainability because our county needs it. Our county is classified as a food desert with some of the most chronic illnesses that we know if our individuals can afford healthy eating, can sustain some of these issues. But with no one helping, no, without the county being a backer of CMD's pantry, how do we continue? Do I need to shut my doors? Okay? That's the bottom line. That's where I am at right now. We started in 18, out of pocket. Everybody was like, it's so new, they can't, they couldn't help us. Okay, we did this. What's the excuse now? Williamsburg County is known for a lot of things. And I've been here 32 years, I think, and I have never known Williamsburg County to be known for anything good. And because we have something good located at 2229 something highway, let's stand behind it. Let's do something. Let's really make a difference. Also, with the county, the county have grant writers to have money coming into the county to help with the county bills and whatnot. So why can't these same grant writers assist the grassroots of the county? And it's not just myself out here, there's other people that want to do things, but because of the back, the money issue and because we've already given up our land to do these things, why can't we have help? I read in my questions, I'm sorry. And should, and is it possible for these, I guess, county workers to assist, the grant writers to assist the grassroots on a daily basis? I mean, just a simple contact, hey, did you see this grant? Did you see that grant? Well, I think you need to apply for this, I think you need to apply for that. Okay? All kinds of systematic help or assistance is wonderful. It's not just about the dollars. And how long, and I may have heard it before and forgot, but how long is the term for county supervising?
Four years.
Okay, now in four years, someone should be able to make a difference somewhere. Four years, that's a long time to be able to prove yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I've been here six months.
I know, I'm not talking about you, I'm not talking about you.
Check back, check back with me in three and a half years and we'll have that discussion.
I'm not talking about you, I'm just talking about overall.
Yes, ma'am.
I've gone through a lot of different county supervisors.
Yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't say anything before because I wasn't in the place that I'm in now. Now I'm ready.
Yes.
So if you're willing to work with me, I'm willing to work with you guys. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, good evening.
Yes, ma'am, good evening.
My name is Rochelle, and I live down in the Hemingway area. I have a question concerning services due to your members in this county who are taxpayers. And the reason I ask that point question because I'm an elderly person who have been paying taxes here forever. My parents have paid taxes because they were business owners. I am a business owner. But on my home, where I reside, I have a driveway that is 2/10 of a mile from the 261 highway. Up until the pandemic, I was able to get road service. In 2014, I could, I called the ambulance because I had an elderly person at my home. The ambulance service refused to come down the driveway because the driveway has grown up, so. If I'm a taxpayer, why aren't we getting service for this? I've heard that there's been laws put on the book that if you go to your doctor, you bring in a letter stating that these people need services. These letters were presented to the office, but I'm getting an answer of, yes, it's on the book for your elderly to have service done, so the ambulance service or fire service or anyone can come to your home. But they're telling me that there's no law on the book for this. So just bring in a doctor's office, a doctor's note stating that these people need, can get medical service.
Right.
But I'm in fight now for the last five years. I can't get any road service done.
How many people live down your road, Ms. Gregory? Is Ms. Gregory right?
That's right.
Okay, I recognize the voice. Okay, all right, you had the mask on. How many, how, because I know about where you stay, I can't remember exactly, but I know about where you, you'd stay right there off 261.
Yes, there's two homes back there.
There's two homes back there.
Yes.
All right, good. Let, let, let me get in touch with you soon so we can take a look at that and see if there's something that we can help you with, with that.
I appreciate that, sir, because, I mean, in 14, we see the ambulance service refused to come down the driveway.
Yes, ma'am. I will, before you leave, I'll have Ms. Summer Baxley.
Yes.
She's my administrative assistant to get your information.
Okay.
And, and we will schedule something to meet with you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Maybe as early as tomorrow, 1st of the week.
The sooner the better, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, my pleasure. All right, is there anyone else? All right, I have 6, 6 o'clock PM, it's now time for our special called council meeting, our call to order. We'll begin with the invocation. Let us, let us pray. Most gracious and everlasting Father, Lord God, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Lord God, we thank you for life, health, strength, family. Lord God, we thank you for our community. Father God, as we begin this meeting tonight, Lord God, we invite the Holy Spirit, the presence of the Holy Spirit into this meeting tonight. Father God, as we make decisions for the betterment of our community and a better environment for our citizens, Father God, we ask you that you give each of us, each of me and each of one of my colleagues, grant us, Father God, the courage of David, the wisdom of Solomon, most importantly, Father God, the compassion of Jesus Christ as we attempt to handle the business for your people. Father God, we thank you for those that are here with us this afternoon. We thank you for those who wanted to come and for whatever reason could not be here this evening, and we pray that you bless them with traveling mercies as we depart later on after this meeting. Father God, we also want to take this opportunity to lift up in prayer the son of Councilman Wilson, who was involved in a vehicle accident early, earlier this afternoon. We pray, Father God, that you will touch his body with your finger of love and your hand of healing and that they, both he and his family will be fine. In your most precious and holy name, we pray, let the people of God say amen.
Amen.
Amen, and amen. First, first on the agenda is the approval of our minutes. Is there a motion to accept our minutes from our last council meeting on July 3rd?
We want to move Councilman Miller.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Miller, and we have a second from Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has been carried. All right, our ordinance is third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2023-07, which is an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes in Williamsburg County known as the Budget Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2023, and Ending June 30, 2024, to provide for the appropriation thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, and to provide for other matters related thereto. All right, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I want to move.
I can.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hammond and a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. All those opposed, please indicate by raising your right hand.
This is Supervisor, Councilman Miller abstained, please.
Okay. Again, those who are opposed, please raise your hands again.
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay, so that's three. Okay, very good. And one abstention. Okay. All right, the motion was not carried. As a result of that, we will not have the resolution tonight for the tax anticipation note. The resolution for the tax anticipation note has to be carried on the same night that a, a budget is passed. The budget is passed, so we will not do the tax anticipation note resolution this afternoon. All right, moving forward.
Ambassador, a question. Okay, now that we didn't pass this third reading of this budget, what are our options now?
Next Monday afternoon, we're going to have another, the third of which that we've had already, a budget work session for the members of council at 2:00 PM next Monday afternoon. We have our regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM, and we will have a public hearing at 5:45, and we will continue to come back until we get this budget passed. Under our form of government, the county supervisor has the responsibility of preparing the budget, and it's up to county council. In fact, state law requires that county council pass a balanced budget. And so we will keep working on it, keep hashing it out till we get it done. But we have to get this done. We are operating now under a 30-day resolution, continuing resolution, because I wanted to give the members of council as much time as needed to go over this budget and to be as involved as they could be, possibly could be. We've had a number of, of, of meetings across the county. We've had a number of finance committee meetings. We've had a number of budget work sessions to go over this budget. And, you know, we, we still have to get it done. It has not passed tonight, but we have to pass a balanced budget. That's required by law, and it's got everything held up until we get it done. And so we'll be back here Tuesday night till we can get it done.
Okay, so it's the supervisor's responsibility to present us with a balanced budget. So you're saying what you're going to do is go back and readjust or adjust some other things that would make it more conducive for passage, you think?
Well, what we're going to do is, I'm going to have, we're going to have another budget work session Monday afternoon at 2:00, Mr. Vice Chairman, and we will give the members of council another opportunity to tell us what they want to do with this budget, and we will present another budget to them, to you all, Tuesday afternoon. And for the record, I want to make sure that the members that are here this afternoon know and understand that the information that was presented in this budget, you know, we met and discussed this on Tuesday, there, some of the members have some concerns, not so much about what's in the budget, but obviously it's the tax increase. I mean, folks, here's where we are. And I was going to try to stay away from this, but, you know, I really don't have much of a choice. You know, two months ago, we asked council to produce, to approve a 30-day continuing resolution to give us extra time to address the upcoming budget. As a result of our intense work on this budget, several town hall meetings across the county, several finance committee meetings, and budget work sessions with all of our council members, our team proposed a tax increase, an increase in tax revenues to council to address the many needs of the county. Like anyone else, I do not like tax increases, but I know that there are times that they are absolutely necessary to keep the government afloat. I know that this is something that you all don't want to hear, and trust me, it is not something that I want to tell you all. However, I've always promised that you, promised you all that I would always be upfront and honest with you all, and I'm going to continue to fulfill that promise. First and foremost, I must advise you that Williamsburg County has been operating in budgets, its budgets, with a deficit for years. We've been dragging along slow debt and old bills for years. Our finance teams have had to decide between paying payroll and paying bills. Obviously, they have decided each and every time to pay payroll for our employees so they can continue to take care of their families. Williamsburg County has gone longer than any other county in South Carolina without a tax increase. We are still operating this county with the same level of funding that we were receiving 16 years ago. Now, I ask that you look at your own personal finances and ask yourself, could I pay my current bills at the same level of salary and funding that I was receiving 16 years ago? Unfortunately, that's how we have been operating our government over the last several years. We've not taken into consideration cost of living increases, increases in retirement, increases in health insurance, or increases in inflation. All of the things that each of you have had to consider in your households have not been taken into consideration in the operation of this government. We have kicked this can down the road so long and so far that there is not much of a can left to kick. All other counties have been increasing taxes by a small amount each year to keep up with changes and increases in the cost of living and the cost to do business. We have not done that in Williamsburg County, and we continue to fall further and further behind other counties. Now, I also want to address this issue. Yes, your taxes have increased over the years, but it was not this council and it was not this county government. Your taxes have been increased by the school district, not county government. I repeat, this council or county government has not increased your taxes in 16 years, and the tax increases that you have received have been from the school district and not county government. In fact, our school taxes have increased each year for the last several years, and our current school board didn't even have the authority to do it. The state did it. Yes, it was done anyway. In 2021, our financial advisors met with us and told us that we needed to increase our tax revenues to keep this county afloat. We were told then that we needed to do some things different. Folks, we didn't listen to them, and we're paying for it. Now, our banking institutions are suggesting the same thing to us. If we don't raise our tax revenues, we will have a hard time finding anyone to lend us money, and we, and when we do find somebody, the rates are not going to be competitive. Currently, we have over $1.7 million in old or slow debt that has to be paid. It's got to be paid. We are meeting with council regularly to discuss ways to address this. In order for our county to operate successfully, we must be able to have credit with vendors. That credit must be paid on time consistently if we expect those vendors to continue to do business with us. In fact, some of our vendors are beginning to threaten legal action because we haven't paid them in so long. I don't know, I, I know we don't run our households like this, so why do we think that it's okay for us to operate the government like this? In this respect, this government is very similar to our household. If you expect to continue to be extended credit, then you must pay your bills on time. This proposed budget will address some of these problems, but not all of it. We are committed to working together to continue to address this issue and get it resolved. This problem, ladies and gentlemen, was not created overnight. It's not going to be solved overnight, but it has to be solved. It has to be solved. In this proposed budget that I prepared tonight, there are a number of positions that have been frozen. That means that the positions are not there, are there, but there was no funding allocated for these positions. We've had several departments that have had positions vacant for years. We are taking the position that if they have been operating for a few years without these positions, then we may to take, we may need to take a look at whether or not these positions are really needed. We also will be looking at eliminating some other positions within our government that we don't think are necessary positions. Also, we have a number of our employees that are not making livable wages. Many of these employees have tremendous positions of trust within our government. We have a duty to We have a duty to you, the citizens, to place people in these positions that possess honesty and integrity. Clerks at local fast food restaurants should not be making more money than some of our government employees that have enormous financial responsibilities. We have attempted to address some of this in that, in this proposed budget. Currently, we don't have a fund balance. A fund balance is basically a savings account for governments. Again, we don't have a fund balance. As a result of not having a fund balance, we take out a loan each year to operate the government between July and December when taxes begin to roll in. That loan is called a tax anticipation note. It is a loan against the taxes that we will receive at the beginning of the year. We have to borrow that money because, again, we have no fund balance. We have no savings account, and as with any other loan that you all get, this loan has to be paid back as well, and of course, with interest. State law suggests to us that each government should have at least a 10% fund balance. As stated earlier, we currently have a zero fund balance. Fund balance is also important to have in case of an emergency, such as a natural disaster, or help with long-range planning, or to meet goals that we might have for our county, and to also show potential investors in our community that we are financially stable. It is our goal at some point to lessen the tax anticipation note and begin to create a fund balance for our county. You know, we were discussing the other day some trend data, some financial trend data about the county, and we discovered that 14 years ago, in 2009, our tax anticipation note was $1.5 million, and now it is $3.5 million. Folks, we're going in the wrong direction. We're going in the wrong direction. We are working together as a team to create an operating budget and financial system for our county to succeed and not to just survive. If we expect, if we expect to attract better-paying jobs here in Williamsburg County, we must first start by getting our financial house in order. We have to get this financial house in order. We cannot expect industries to locate here if we're barely hanging on financially. Now, I hear a whole lot of you all talk about what's happening in other counties. Well, let me share with you what's happening in other counties. They're raising taxes. They're raising taxes, and if we want what other counties have, then we have to make the sacrifices that other counties have made. We cannot continue to do the same things that we've been doing and expecting different results. We all know that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again but expecting a different result. As I have said to many of you all many times before, and I will continue to say, just because we've always done it a certain way, doesn't mean that we have to remain that way. I take offense when I hear people say, well, you know, that's just how we are here in Williamsburg. Folks, we don't have to be this way. It's got to stop at some point. We have people that are willing to help us to move this county forward, but at some point, we got to be willing to help ourselves. We have gotten great financial advice in the past, and we are currently getting great financial advice. We didn't listen then, and we're now paying the price for not following that advice. The other counties that you all like to tell us about that are doing so well and are so successful, they took the advice of their financial advisors, and yes, it's paid off. Folks, again, if we keep doing the same things, we're going to keep getting the same results. In fact, it's going to get worse. Williamsburg County, we got to do something different. Now, I believe, I believe that this is our moment to move forward, this is our time to create a better county for our people. Many of us have been praying for a long time for the success of this community. Williamsburg County, I believe this can be our moment. I believe this can be our time. Together, as I've always said, together we can do better. Williamsburg County, with God's help, we will do better, but we've got to do things Mr. Vice Chairman, I know that you didn't expect a response that long.
That's okay.
And my intentions were to deliver this message to you all at another point of this meeting, but folks, we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. I don't like tax increases. I don't. We have not done what other counties have done. They did incremental increases, one or two mills a year, every year. We didn't do that, and it's caught up with us. What I recommended to council was the minimum of what we needed to do, to start digging out of the hole that we're in. We got to start digging out of this hole. We can't keep doing what we're doing. We got to do something different, y'all. We got to. So with that being said, Monday afternoon at 2:00, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Supervisor. I do want to say that I've been in these workshops that we've been holding, and I know for a fact that we've already cut the frills, so now we've already done that, even before we proposed any type millage increase. But we've done that, we proposed a millage increase, that got voted down. Now, at this point, when you go back and start working on presenting us a new budget for us to decide up or down, what can you do that you have not already done, and if there was something else, why did you not do it then? And the next thing is, let me get my thoughts together. The only thing I would be able to see right now is you would, would you could possibly consider cutting some services that we're currently receiving in your attempt to present a new budget? That's the only thing I see that we did not touch on, and a few other things, but primarily, would any service that we're receiving now be in danger of being cut?
Yes, sir. Well, on Tuesday afternoon at 2:00, that's, I would like for this council to tell me what you all want me to do with the budget, because I've prepared a budget, and I gave it to you, it was voted down, so y'all tell me what y'all want me to do with it, because if we're not going to increase taxes, then we're going to have to cut services. And you all can tell me what services that y'all want to cut, and we'll cut them. But that's the whole idea behind the budget work sessions. I wanted this council to be a part of the budget process. It's not fair to them, and I'm going to say this as the county supervisor, it is not fair to county council to be left out the budget process, and they were not left out of the budget process. They were not, and as long as I'm here as county supervisor for Williamsburg County, they will not be left out of the budget process. They are elected officials just like I am, they have to stand before you all and explain why we do what we do, and out of fairness and respect to them, they should be a part of the process. You know, this is not just one person running this show, we're doing this together, and I wanted to make sure under this administration that we did that, and we meet, and I probably get on their nerves sometimes with the amount of meetings that we have and the amount of information that I give them, but I want them to be informed. So when they make decisions, they're making informed decisions about the future and the situations here in Williamsburg County. And so that's where, that's where we are, and I want to set the record straight on something. I want to be clear, this county supervisor and this council, we do not have an adversarial relationship. We work together, and we're going to work together to get this budget done. It's going to get done. Now, it may not be what I want it to be, it may not be everything that they want it to be, and it may not be everything that you all want it to be, but we're going to work together and we're going to get it done, because that's what you all elected us to do, and we're going to do it. We're going to get it done. This, what I've asked them to do is not easy. If it was easy, it would have been done already. I know that I'm asking them to do a lot. I realize I'm asking you all to accept a lot, but this is about the survival of this county. We're not even talking about the betterment, we're talking about survival now. This is about the survival of this county, and we've got to make tough choices, and it's either going to be in tax increases, or it's going to be in cuts to services, or combination of the both, which is exactly, you know, what the budget that we proposed tonight reflected. And so we're going to get together, like I said, Monday at 2:00, and we're going to hash it out and get it ready and get ready to come back and do this again Tuesday. We've got one more thing on the agenda, but if anyone else, yes.
Supervisor, I just want to say thank you because you have included us, we've had, I think, about three or four budget work sessions where we've been able to address certain things, and again, taxes haven't been increased since 2009, and I hear people all the time saying what we don't have here like we have in other counties. Other counties are constantly increasing taxes. So I just want everybody to be aware of that we're going to continue to fall behind the curve by not increasing taxes, and understand that some of the services that you patronize, that you may get for free, may be cut, or it could be a fee assessed. Understand that, because you can't have your cake and eat it too. And like you said, it's a part of survival, and I know this is something that just didn't start with this administration, it has been ongoing. Again, keep in mind, taxes have not increased since 2009, but that didn't stop the price of everything else from going up. So I just want to say thank you. I will be again at the budget workshop session, I will be very vocal, as I always am, and I know that we will work together as a council and administration and get this budget passed.
Before you go, Ms. Hamm, let me just bring some perspective to this, and I don't really know the answer, not specifically, the proposed 10-mill in tax increase, I'm going to give us a scenario, and I hope to find your people here that can shed some light on this. If you own a house, let's say it's a $100,000 house, how much would this 10-mill increase cause your property taxes to be increased?
$40.
$40?
Yes, sir.
That's all, thank you. Thank you.
So just to put it in perspective, if your house is worth $300,000, it's $120 in one year.
Yeah, that's correct.
$100,000, $40.
Yeah.
Anyone else with anything else?
Just want to say one other thing, I'm sorry. I know many of you have heard that I have announced it on Facebook, I haven't officially announced it, that I will be stepping down from county council, but I will say this, that ever since I came on county council, I've always been an advocate for tax increases because I see where we're headed. And I just want to say, as the council, I'm just asking everybody to do the right thing and not worry about being reelected. I think it's a big thing for this supervisor, who has only been here for six months, to bring a budget to us, to go around to the community and talk to people and let them know that there's a possible millage increase, AKA tax increase, that's a big thing. He has a six-figure salary, you elect him, so to be able to put himself on the chopping block like that and propose that says that it's not about the dollars, not about just occupying these seats, it's really about the survival of the county.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else before we move on to the next item in the agenda? Anyone else? All right, third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2023-08, in ordinance to authorizing execution and delivery of a good and sufficient deed conveying the building and improvements located in the town of Hemingway bearing TMS number 45-466-042, located at Baxley Road, Hemingway, South Carolina, also known as the Safe Auto Building to Baxley Road LLC in consideration of the sum of $450,000. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance?
No move.
All right, there is a motion by Councilman Lee, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Hammond, are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that does it for our third readings, we have no second readings tonight, we have no first readings tonight, and as I indicated earlier, as it relates to our resolution, we have to do by law a resolution for the tax anticipation note, and we, because, and because we did not approve the budget, we can't do the tax anticipation note resolution. Those two things have to be done on the same night, in the same budget, so that will be back on the agenda for next week. All right, is there? I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins, I can't.
We have another ordinance.
Another ordinance? You talking about the one for the Safe Auto Building?
If we have third reading on the Baxley Road.
Yes, we just did it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just did it, yes, we just did it, all right. All right, and there are no second readings, there are no first readings, I just explained the resolutions, there is no issue to go into executive session. I just gave my county supervisors a report. All right, is there any reports from council, any of the members of council? I know I just told you all that during the invocation that Councilwoman, Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Wilson's son was involved in a vehicle accident a little earlier, so we ask that you keep both he and his family in your prayers. Anything from any of the members of council? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Ready for questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, we will see you all next Tuesday evening at 5:45 p.m. for the public hearing.